All right, it is four thirty, so we'll go ahead and call the work session to order. Thanks to everybody being here. Thank you guys. Welcome to twenty twenty-five. So I have only messed up the date once so far. And that's probably once of many more to come. Tonight, the agenda, we've kept it kind of simple. We do have a couple of things. Ones that go over the Lane Musinteski change of place. The reason Charles can do the presentation on what else could be voted on in our next meeting. We also have Robbie Westbrook is going to go over the hazard mitigation plan. Have a discussion on what all is in it. That'll be something that needs to go on our next agenda as well, so that we make sure our hazard mitigation plan is up to date. And then general discussion if either of you have anything you want to bring to the table. As we get the year kicked off. Know that auditors showed up on the second day of the year, they were already here meeting with people. So they wasted no time to dive in on working on our current audit for the twenty-four fiscal year and the close out. And so we'll hopefully be able to get those numbers finalized a lot sooner. It does look like we came out well on both the revenue and the expenditures for the close on twenty-four. Obviously, until it's out, it won't be official. But it looks like we were slightly up on revenue and slightly below on expenditure. So, which is always a good sign. So we'll go through the agenda and then we'll go into the rest in general discussion. And try to let everybody get out of here before the temperature continues to plummet because it's going to be colder by the time we finish this meeting. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Charles, let him go through the different requests we've got coming up. Think I've already done, I may have left it off, but. Am I clicking for you again?
If you don't mind, Chris. Good evening, commissioners. Happy New Year. I believe we have seven cases to present to you tonight. But before I begin, if I may, add this statement. All future development shall comply with all applicable codes to assure that all residential structures and property meet safety regulations to protect the health and welfare of surrounding residents.
The computer that you're pointing at is actually over here, so. Okay, I'll click, I'll click for you, how about that?
I appreciate that.
Well, hang on, it's a PowerPoint issue, it's not a clicker issue. The whole thing's frozen.
Probably because I hit fourteen buttons.
Well, that could have been it, too. Try and click or not. There you go.
You got Charles.
First case is references RZ dash one nine zero eight one three. The applicant is Cindy Petty.
Hang on one second, I believe I've opened her on PowerPoint. When she.
I was like, I'll put that one.
That, that is not the one. Sorry.
Cindy's again?
I'll start putting.
If y'all want to, we can go ahead and get married and end this film and we'll start it all over fresh again. Get this call to order. Now you got to correct.
There we go. All right, this, this application is referenced as RZ dash one nine zero eight five one. The applicant is Roy Donald Brady. The property is located at ten seventy-five Waters, Waters Edge Circle. The request is from urban residential UR to estate residential ER. The approximate acreage is eight point zero eight four acres. The parcel is also identified as zero one two zero seven three. The applicant intends, his intent is to correct zoning for land swap with the adjoining lot. You'll see a location map there. You'll see that the surrounding, surrounding properties are, are, are UR currently. And here's the layout, proposed survey for the applicant. In our comprehensive plan, the character area has been labeled as rural residential, which allows for low density agricultural type uses. And staff has made a determination that if this character area presented in our current flow, our future land use map. Staff recommendation, after reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approval of the request to rezon subject property, the eight point zero eight four acre parcel known as zero one two zero seven three from urban residential to estate residential to align the zoning with the adjacent tracks to facilitate a land swap. The planning commission did meet on, on this application, made a motion to recommend approval of the rezon request, which carried unanimously four yes and zero no's. Any questions?
I might if I hijack and go back a couple slides here. So I know it's saying it's to join neighboring property to correct the zoning. Has the zoning map just not been updated since another?
That's correct.
Okay.
So the larger tract is ER already?
It is. It was Brian Armorsmith's rezon that he did out there. It's been probably six months ago.
So why is this one just a down zone?
That was my mistake.
Okay.
Um, we didn't charge him, so we postponed the down zoning process on fees, but I had already advertised for the planning commission meeting. And so we had to follow through with that schedule. And the applicant is aware, I talked to him about it.
Okay, okay.
That, that, that was my only question when I was looking at the map, so.
No problem.
Perfect.
Oh, that makes sense.
Any more questions? I'm good. You good?
Good.
Second application, RZ dash one nine zero eight five two. The applicant is Sean Elliott. Location of the property is five seven seven zero, highway one thirty-six west. The request is from AG Agriculture to Highway Business HB. Approximate acreage is three point eight eight acre portion of the fifteen point seven eight parcel. And the parcel is also identified as zero two zero zero one six. The applicant's intent is to use the three point eight eight acre portion to build a shop for commercial equipment, equipment. Here's a location map. You see how the, the property is traversed on highway thirty-six. That is the proposed survey. And if you'll notice in our comprehensive plan, that character area has been designated as material, commercial corridor, which primary land uses will include a mixture of retail, services and what have you. And we believe that based on the application that fits the character that's being envisioned for that area. After reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approval of the request to rezon the three point eight eight acre portion of property identified as parcel zero two zero, zero one six from AG to HB. Or Highway Business, this change aims to enable the construction of a facility for trucks and tractors. Furthermore, the rezoning will facilitate the subdivision of the track currently intersected by highway one thirty-six west, ensuring zoning compliance. This application was, was presented to the planning commission. Motion was made to recommend approval of the rezon request, which carried unanimously towards the. Any questions?
So would this also be able to become a retail type store if this particular business failed?
If it met all the other requirements of the.
So they could have that property?
Yes. Any other questions?
I'm gonna hijack you one more time, sorry. On the map here, what's outlined in red, that's the three point eight eight acre portion of it. The rest is what's on the other side of the road of the fifteen acre.
Both, both parts.
And they're keeping it ag across the road, but just rezoning.
Yes.
Just one click.
Any other questions? We want to the next application?
Yes, sir.
This application is referenced as RZ dash one nine zero eight five three. Southern Property Investments is the applicant. The property is located along Stonecrest Road. The request is from AG to Small Ag. And the property is approximately twenty-seven point two acres. The parcel is identified as zero three four, zero eight four, zero zero two. The applicant's intent is to divide the parcel into five tracks, each being for a single family housing. You see, you'll see the, the map here, location map of where the parcel is. And if I might add, we met with Mr. Burton on several occasions. He realized he had to widen that portion of the road to meet, to meet our code, to comply with our code. Also including to, to be sure that those neighboring owners were, were in support of widening that portion, that portion of the road. And he did receive that support, which was mostly, I think, it was his relatives.
Yeah. All of, everything that's across the road is relatives.
I'm sure you all might have some questions, just going further detail than that. This is the, the proposed survey for five tracks, which would be approximately five, four, four acres apiece. This, this property is within the character area. It's labeled in our comprehensive plan as rural residential. It fits what, what the primary land uses and development patterns that was decided upon that we created this particular character. After reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approval of the twenty-seven point two acre tract, identified as parcels zero three four, zero eight four, zero zero two, from AG to Small Ag to, to permit a five plus acre density for family housing and related uses with the following condition. This condition was also discussed with the applicant. Parts of the existing Stonecrest Dean Mill Road right away, as mentioned earlier, will be extended by fifteen feet, resulting in the required compliance of sixty foot wide easement with thirty feet on the east side of the right of the center. Again, the planning commission met on this particular case, made a motion to recommend approval of the rezon request with staff condition which carried unanimously five zero.
Is that parcel totally surrounded by family? You, you mentioned.
Not totally, but most.
Did he receive support from the people who were not family?
That was, yes, we, we, we made that requirement when we met with him to, to, to get that support.
Did I send all the applications for this?
Don't remember seeing them.
I think I'll send that over to you first then tomorrow, but he has copies, these guys aren't petitions signed by every property owner.
It's part of the application.
As part of his application, so everyone that would have to be basically on board to dedicate that portion of the property to that access has already signed it.
So all the homeowners are going to give the land to the county for the road? Okay.
Has anyone met with them with an expectation as to what that's going to do for the road?
No, they, it's put in there too, and I'll, I'd have to look at the actual thing because Mr. Burton drafted it up and basically gave them a copy, but he's expressed to them that it is, he is going to be bringing it up to standard, but there is no expectation that the county is then going to maintain it. It's just to get that extra access in there, but Robert, I guess, has explained to them that he is going to bring it up to a better condition it's currently in. I think that that's why they're on board.
And so, can you go back real quick?
Of course.
No, to the one with the condition on it, sorry. So it'll be a total of, the road will be thirty feet wide, is that correct, Kirk? Is that?
It's a sixty foot wide right away. And then, you know, it's going to be a two lane road, so it won't be quite thirty feet wide. A typical road, about twenty, twenty-two, something.
It gives you the utility right away and the, the right away on the side, so sixty feet total, the center one being down the middle.
So then who will have to maintain this road?
The property owners, as they currently do.
Well, his section of, but that is actually a county road. It's still on our books as a county road.
How far back do we have?
To, to a point, you know, I think that just has extended a little bit, hasn't it?
Up, you can see where the yellow continues, and I think it runs to about where that, that easement kind of splits off to the right.
Okay.
I think is where the county maintains, but to my understanding, it's one of those that was, I, I, and to correct me if I'm wrong, Kirk, but abandoned, but never formally abandoned, and so it's just kind of been one of those gray areas.
Those that are in limbo that need to get rid of.
Yeah.
That's part of the reason why he'll, he'll be granted to pay his grant.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Next case, RZ dash one nine zero eight five four. The applicant is Brandon Rowland at Brett Rowland. The location of the property is highway one thirty-six connector. The request is from agriculture or ag to rural residential or R. The request is to develop an eight lot subdivision. And we'll see here fifteen point twelve acre portion of a thirty-four point seventy-two acre parcel. The parcel is also identified as zero one eight zero, zero three zero, zero zero four. Here's a location map. You see that, that ag, that ag property is, is, is abutting RR, RR properties. Also across, across the street is RR. That is the proposed survey. If you notice eighteen, roughly eighteen point zero two acres, which is back at the property, subject property. They want to maintain that as open space farmland. There may be an intent to build one, one other house for one of their daughters, I believe. But the eighteen acres will be, you put aside for farmland and open space, which is in concert with our comprehensive plan to protect farmland, open space and environmentally sensitive areas. This character area is labeled in our comprehensive plan as rural residential. After reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approval of the request to rezon the fifteen point twelve acre portion of the property identified as parcel zero one eight zero three zero, zero zero four, from ag to rural residential, while leaving the remaining eighteen point zero two acres classified as ag. This property will be combined with the tract identified as parcel zero one eight zero zero, which is currently zoned RR to facilitate the development of a minor, single family subdivision consisting of eight lots. Of course, they'll have to go through staff for approval for that minor, minor, single family subdivision. The planning commission made a motion to recommend approval of the rezon request, which carried unanimously five zero. Questions?
Can you go back to the one with the zones on it, the colored zones? So in that one, are both of those two rural residential lots going in with it or just one of them? The ones on the same, the ones that are on the same side of the road? Or either of them, I mean, that's understood.
Well, yeah, that, that one, the, the subing portion of it is going to be a part.
Look at this, it should be a part of the.
If you ask the next slide, the survey slide.
This is just a super weird survey to begin with, yeah. If you go back to the other one though.
Here?
This one right here, and the Rowlands own this one, and they also did a landslot with ETC on this. So they're actually gonna obtain this portion too, they're gonna get ETC, a little corner down here. This, a little bit of this is going to be needed to this property owner because they want just a little bit more of a buffer, some acreage behind it. But it's this, there's a house sitting on this right now that will be torn down and be great and sharp. Yeah.
Any other questions?
So all of the driveways will be on the one there, a six factor?
Yes.
So they'll have interior roads?
One of the reasons for it being a minor subdivision is no new roads proposed because they're all going to have runage off of the existing road there. Any other questions?
One thing I'll add to that too, and they discussed it a little bit in the planning commission video. I know all of those driveways are, they have to be approved through DOT since it is a state route. But I know that they had said through conversations with DOT, they're not going to have eight individual driveways. It sounds like they're going to have four driveways, so each, every two lots will share a driveway. So there's about as many cuts per cuts off of county road to kind of lessen that impact right there.
And just, if I can just throw this nugget, as we're looking to revamp and reassess our overall court ordinances, that's going to be something that's going to be taken into account, limiting curb cuts and what have you along county roads. So that you don't have that influx. We have major minor subdivisions coming into it. Any other questions? Next application, RZ dash one, one nine zero eight five six. The applicant is Kristen Braswell. The location of the property is five fifty-eight Fifth Road. Request is from ag to rural residential. One point five zero seventeen, I'm sorry, one point five zero one seven acre portion of a thirty-one point eight six acre parcel. The parcel is identified as zero four five, zero zero six, zero zero three. The applicant's intent is to sell portion to, to, to adjoining property owner to, to be combined with adjoining lot, zero four five, zero zero six, zero zero two. Wish I had the little light.
You got one on there. It's the old green dash. Oh, it's show up on, it won't, just kidding.
It didn't work on that screen?
Oh, I think I have one.
Directly it was.
As you can see, the portion that they're trying to add to this would be a triangular shape right here. In order, in order to make that happen, it has to be similar. That portion being to RR, well, request to rezon RR. That, that gives you an idea what they're trying to do. See that triangular shape there? That would be added to the existing RR zone property.
Ever seen the two round circles on a property survey like that on them?
The character area for that area is rural residential, which allows for a low density agricultural type uses and recreational facilities and what have you, but what is being proposed fits, fits within the criteria that's set place in our comprehensive plan and our future land use map. After reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approval of the request to rezon the one point five zero one seven acre tract designated as parcel zero four five, zero zero six, zero zero three, changing its designation from ag to rural residential. This adjustment is intended to combine it, as I mentioned earlier, with the neighboring property identified as parcel zero four five, zero zero six, zero zero two, to ensure compliance with zoning regulations. Again, the planning commission met on this application. Motion was made to recommend approval of the rezon request, which carried unanimously five yeses and zero no's. Any questions? You're going once, going twice. This next application, RZ dash one nine zero eight five seven. The applicant is Thompson Lane Dreams LLC. The location of the property is three, three seventy Thompson Lane. The request is rezoned from agriculture to rural residential. Four point thirty-four acre portion of a combined sixty point sixty-two acre parcel. The parcel is identified as zero three three, one two nine, and zero three three, one two nine, zero zero two. The intent of the applicant is to split a house from AG property and create a buildable lot. Here is the location map. And you'll see that small little square, southern, southeastern part of that parcel. That's point twenty-three acres that they are trying to have rezoned. Then there'll be a portion also north of that that is going to be rezoned. Request is to rezon to RR as well. Also to, to note, all that point twenty-three acre parcel, I believe there's a current cell tower in that property.
Oh, that's a cell tower, not a house?
Yes.
Okay, I thought this whole time that was a house.
It's a cell.
Okay.
Current survey, and then there is the proposed survey. And you do have some RR zone properties that are in that survey area. This parcel is within our character area for rural residential, which once again allows for agricultural, low density uses. And the staff has made a determination that this zoning or rezoning request fits, fits the criteria of the character area that's in our current plan and our future land use map. After reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approval of the request to rezon the point twenty-three acre property identified as zero three three, one two nine, zero zero two, and a four, four point one one acre portion of the property identified as parcel zero three three, one two nine, from ag to rural residential. This change will allow the existing house to be separated from the sixty point thirty-nine acre property and create an additional lot for a future single family dwelling. The planning commission met on this particular application as well. Motion was made to recommend approval of the rezon request, which carried unanimously five zero.
Is it on the chart, or on the table for permissible use chart within the ordinance, cell towers? Are they permissible within rural residential?
Yes, in our, in our code, they are considered conditional. So I believe that cell tower was approved as conditional use.
I mean, I know it's approved as an ag and, and rezoning that cell tower into rural residential, does that put us noncompliant?
That, that'll be another area that we'll reassess moving forward.
Can, can you go back to that map again? I'm still trying to figure out.
Wasn't this one?
This one's confusing.
Is this the one that the next one is part of the same thing?
Yes, it is.
Would it make more sense to hear the next one and then ask off?
It might.
So is that, there's two different parts of the land we're looking at here.
Yes.
It's two separate pieces.
So, yeah.
You go ahead and go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is confused.
This, you can see, this is the initial survey, so all of this, not including this little piece right here that's cut out, that's a separate property owner. All of this is one piece, and then this little point two, three acres is another piece in itself. So technically, yes, it's two.
So for this one, we're just expanding that point two, three acres to essentially make it a square area.
So it's basically, because it's going to run off of these, we can see a property line right here, it's just going to go straight down, straight over to create that, and then it's sectioning out this house right here to create, it's a parcel up there.
So someone will have a cell tower on their residential lot?
Yes, and to my understanding, and I, I, I could be wrong, but when we were talking to Davis about this, I'm going to say that he planned on putting his personal one out here, and I was going to say maybe for a family member, obviously maybe like his mom or something like that, was going to live on this parcel. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Of course, they want to keep their, their income.
With the cell tower.
It took me forever to try to figure out how to portray all of these because it's so confusing on what's included and what's not, how it's getting to what.
Any other questions? This next application, RZ dash one nine zero eight five eight. Thompson Lane Dreams LLC. Location is three seventy Thompson Lane. The request is from ag to small ag, ten point eight two acre. Portion of the sixty point thirty-nine acre parcel, which is part two of the application. Parcel is identified as zero three three, one two nine. The intent is to create buildable, small, small ag lots. Here is the location map. Small ag allows you a bit, a bit more flexibility in terms of density. But it's still about, it's still the same in terms of what would be required for ag, smaller lots. You see, that whole area is similar, similarly zoned to their request in terms of uses or proposed uses. Here is the proposed survey. Ten point eight two acres. And again, this is in the rural residential character. And again, this is, uh, in the rural residential character area, and it is in concert with, uh, the criteria. That, that's in our comp plan and the future land use map. After reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approval of the request to rezonate ten point eight two acre portion of a sixty point thirty-nine acre property. Identified as parcel zero three three one two nine from ag to small ag, to establish a smaller area for, uh, many, many farms. The planning commission made a motion to recommend approval of the rezonate request, which carried unanimously, uh, five yeses and zero noes. Any questions? And thank you very much.
The east end woke up, and the, or the west end woke up, and the.
About time, right?
About everyone, the.
All of one.
Yeah. And that is all I have.
All right, thank you, Charles.
Thanks, Charles.
Appreciate it. Um, next item we had on the agenda is to go over our hazard mitigation plan. I know it's a, a big book, so hopefully Robbie's not gonna read us the entire book.
I was so looking forward to that.
Yeah. I hope everything's a great.
You're up.
Good to see y'all tonight, and, uh, really what I wanted to do is just summarize what the doggone thing is, and what it means to us, and what our plans are going forward with it. So, back in two thousand, Congress passed the Disaster Hazard Mitigation Act, and it requires all states and counties to develop and maintain hazard mitigation plans. Now, we all know from the eighth grade that it's tough for, for the federal government to really push things down on local government, so the way they do this is if you don't have a hazard mitigation plan, then you're not eligible for their funding streams that come down from FEMA into the states. So, that's kind of what, kind of, kind of the, the power they hold in us and all other counties developing a hazard mitigation plan. The hazard mitigation plans are updated every five years, this is our five-year update. Uh, once you all approve this plan at your regular meeting, and then the city of Jasper approves it, the town of Talkin Rock approves it, and the city of Nelson approves it. Then we'll be once again eligible for hazard mitigation funding. Now, hazard mitigation funding is not free. Uh, there's always a match, and that's why I always try to caution people, just because you're eligible for the funding, which is typically seventy-five, twenty-five. If you're going out after a million dollar hazard mitigation grant to elevate a road, for instance, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you gotta have of your local money. So, so I always caution people on that, while the funding stream will be available to us, we still have to be careful about moving forward. The hazard mitigation plan basically does this. A community effort, uh, several meetings were held across the community in the last twelve months or so, and basically we identify as emergency managers all the hazards that could impact your community. We look at the community history, uh, look at the, uh, there's a lot of equations we use and algorithms to determine what our threat risks are for different, uh, communities. And that, that tells us all the bad things that can happen. And so, mitigation simply is, is there anything we can do to lessen the impacts of those disasters? Uh, for instance, for tornadoes, of course, we can't prevent tornadoes, but can we take mitigation actions to help prepare the community for tornadoes? Such as a community storm shelter, or, uh, no weather radios, or other ways to get the warning out to the community. Uh, in this particular, uh, version of our plan, we have numerous projects, potential projects that are noted here. Uh, Georgia right now has almost eight hundred million dollars in mitigation funding for the entire state, based on two recent hurricanes. Anytime a part of the state gets a presidential disaster declaration, not only does a funding stream come through to provide help for the disaster, but mitigation funding comes along with that. And so, once this plan's approved, we would be eligible to look at some of the projects we have in here and see if any of those, eh, eh, first of all, you know, what impacted with the projects that are proposed in here have on the community. Do we think the cost benefit is worth pursuing a grant, and then do we have a local match for the grant? Uh, some other things that are, that are noted in here, as you look through it, uh, you will see that there's a lot of public works projects, uh, in here. And actually, working with Kirk, we've identified five more, that once you all approve, but FEMA will allow us to add those five additional projects. If a project is not identified and in this plan, you can't apply for it. So, that's why we have to be careful moving forward to make sure that anything we think we might wanna do in that five-year period, it has to be in the plan. And a lot of counties, and, and y'all know, I, I've traveled all over teaching this, and a lot of counties will get this approved and never get it out again until Jima calls them and tells them it's time to get to do a new one. But we're not gonna do that, and we're gonna keep it out, and we're gonna actively add projects as we go along, just to have them ready to go. We may have a disaster, I hope not, but if we had one this summer, we might see some additional mitigation potential projects that will add to the plan as we move along. But again, I, I, I just don't wanna give the illusion, just because this is approved, we can do all these projects, because we certainly can, from a match and grant perspective. And also, hazard mitigation grants, historically, we have this fast deadline that the counties have to do to get the applications in, and then it typically takes FEMA two years to approve. We got approved for a grant last week that you guys applied for four years ago, almost, and y'all have already done the work with county funds. So, I either gotta see if they'll let us do something else with it, or send it back. So, it's not speed either, it's not a speedy solution. But this is just one of the hurdles we gotta get over, uh, to be in compliance. Uh, again, this is gonna be an active plan from now on, and it's gonna be, when, next time we, it comes time to approve it, it'll be very easily done. And, uh, we're gonna keep adding projects to it, just to have them in a queue, you know, in case something comes along we might be able to do. So, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions you all have. Uh, I know some of that sounds bad, but it's really a good thing, because it helps us prepare too, but the funding part's not all fun and games either.
So, you, you mentioned specifically public works projects that you've been working with Kirk on, uh, what does that entail? Are you talking about repaving roads, or is this?
Well, no, we're talking about things, what they look at is repetitive losses. So, if we have a road that floods every time it rains hard, that's a repetitive loss. So, if, if engineering says that that road, if it's elevated five feet, it will stop the loss, then that could be a project to elevate that road. If we have culvert, concrete culverts, and every time we have, you know, five or six inches of rain and, and a short amount of time, we lose those culverts, well, maybe we need to put an elevated cross in there of some kind. Well, that could be stop a repetitive loss. Those are the kind drainage elevation, you know, replacing a culverted cross with a permanent structure, a, a bridge. Uh, those are all mitigation kinds of projects.
Phillip's not here, so I'm gonna say this is just a razzin', but repeated busted water lines don't qualify.
No, I'm sorry about that. Now, if you had a flood that was breaking the water lines, yeah, i- if there was some disaster causing them debris, yeah.
You know, we just had a, a sinkhole cause a water line to break, um, now.
Now, that could be.
But it's, it's not been repetitive, it's just.
Right. Well, if it's happened one time, at least we could get it in the queue. So, uh, but yeah, I mean, some kind of natural hazards gotta cause it for us to be able to consider and then do the work on it. They gobble up projects, and I say gobble up two years to get it approved, that all the engineering's done on, that, that we've got a good cost estimate on, and that's what Kirk and I've been working on. Any of those kind of things, they really, and they call two years rushing it third, so.
And is it always a twenty-five, seventy-five split, or is it just typically?
I would say ninety-five percent of the time, that's correct. Sometimes a state, in some cases, I've heard that the state has thrown some in, like up to fifteen percent, but again, eh, it's not always that way. Typically seventy-five, twenty-five.
And you have to have a disaster declared before you can apply, is that?
I said it again, yeah.
Do, do you have to have a disaster declared before you can apply?
No, we can apply, if that funding's available, and, and they have an open grant period, we can apply.
Are we in such a period?
We are in a period, and we are looking at several projects, but again, it's the match.
It's the match.
It's the match, and, and, and that's the thing, you know, like, we can get portable message boards, for a while, we just can't, as part of the, what you can get, and I have a mitigation plan. And so, we're looking at trying and working with Kirk, we're looking at, is that something that would help us, help the citizens, you know, with DJers and things like that, if something bad happened, and do we have the match? You know, so that's kind of what we're looking at, you know, some of the smaller things right now, trying to kind of get that figured out. So, the, I mean, this is a good thing, don't get me wrong, but I, I just don't wanna set expectations to where, oh my God, we got this fortune of money sitting out there, and, and, and while I think that is a fortune of money, that it also is a fortune at the local level to do the match. So.
If, if we were, I'm not saying we do, but if we were to have SLOSS money available, can it be used for the match, or is it very dependent?
Well, it depends if it's within the category that's approved.
Like if it's a road SLOSS, because on the referendum, if it's in one of the project list of the referendum of the SLOSS projects, then yes, but if it's not approved in, in the referendum, when it was originally approved.
And Kirk, can you help me with this, I don't know, we, we've added a couple of camp road drainage projects, or a little bit going in, and a couple of camp road drainage projects, do you remember?
Yeah, they were the same ones that we put in T-SLOSS.
And those would qualify because the language of the way that the road.
And a lot of the engineering's been done on that, and we do have some cost estimates, so that, those are good ones. Again, it just determines on whether y'all, you know, have the match, if y'all feel like y'all have the match to do it.
So, if T-SLOSS would have passed, we could have put it out, one hundred percent.
Have we ever lost, I'm, I'm gonna ask this with Christie sitting here, have we ever lost the repeater on open authority due to a natural disaster?
Really just saying that with a chance of wondering whether it comes.
Has the mitigation money?
I am. I brought that here.
You know, Pickens County, I was looking back through the history, Pickens County has gotten a lot of mitigation grants in the past for generators. I mean, a lot of them, uh, I don't see, they're up in here, but, but, ton of generators have been awarded to us.
A lot of water pump stations and fire stations and other.
Yeah, absolutely, so I said, we're in pretty, we're in good shape with those, as a matter of fact, the, the, the grant we just got, that y'all applied for three or four years ago, is for more generators, but y'all have already bought them, because they've been waiting.
And can't use them to recharge them?
Uh, no.
Uh, it doesn't work that way?
I wish it did, but it doesn't. But, but, so we're trying to struggle now radically.
Can we, can we move those generators somewhere else a little?
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out, is there another place, you know, that, that, and then talk them into, it's probably take a sixty-page white paper to talk them into moving them to some, I mean, just historically, you know, thinking about it. But, uh, but I'll, you know, this is just the first trip I'm gonna be making to y'all over the next few months, I hope y'all don't get tired of me, and, uh.
But now, you've gotta earn your title, um, at what point in time does your confidence in weather forecast start to, to, to hone in that that might actually?
Wednesday.
Well, you, you made it two days, two days before is when you're.
Yeah, pretty confident, yeah, yeah, that just, over historical, forty years of doing this, you know, that, you know, the weather forecast is really good, but it's only so good. It's the weather, it can be what it wants, you know, we don't have, you know, we just, we're just mathematically trying to figure out what's gonna happen. So, uh, but yeah, I mean, I think the confidence is growing, the weather service gonna start briefing daily, starting tomorrow, and, uh, so I, I think their confidence is growing in it, and that's what we go by, that's what they say. And then we kind of use our own memories and history and things like that to kind of refine tune that a little bit. But I would say, y'all got a good crew here, you know, and, you know, they're on top of it.
He's got his crew, his pre-treated, uh, moment, they pre-treated Henderson.
Yeah, we had a meeting last Thursday, and they went ahead and pre-treated, so, so.
We're trying to stay ahead of, uh, ahead of, and they got the equipment, and we were joking, last week, I told him it's a good chance to, to test your equipment, and he said, well, the one big piece of equipment's currently not running, so wherever you do it with the smaller, well, then the other is back up and running, so we can get everything up.
Yeah, well, they're doing a great job, and I, I always tell them when their attitudes are good, because I worry me to death, so, that's a good thing, that's what you all, that's what you all. Anything else I can help y'all with? Thank y'all, thank you, Rob.
Thank you. Sorry, Doctor Westwood.
No. Always good.
Oh, all right, so general discussion, you guys have anything, even though it's a meeting here, we've had a lot of, a lot of big plans moving forward, but, I guess, think of what you got.
Happy to be here, happy, happy to hear you, y'all, just waiting on someone to burst out happy.
I know we've, we briefly touched on the weather forecast, looking for Wednesday, I would like to encourage everybody to follow the, the Pickens County Emergency Management, uh, Facebook page. Uh, they do a, a great job trying to keep people up to date, I don't want the National Weather Service to push it out, and anything locally that we've got, that'll jump on there as well. Um, if you haven't signed up for Code Red, sign up for Code Red, if there's road cancellations, code road, road closures, or any, anything, we, we get that information, we'll make sure that that's coming out as well, so. Uh, encourage people to pay attention, be prepared, just in case, um, so, it's, the more we're prepared, the less likely it seems to ever happen, so, that, that's all prepared like crazy, so that we don't have to deal with it. That's all I've got, and then we've got a meeting, uh, our, our regular meeting for January is not gonna be on the third Monday, the third Monday is actually a holiday in January, it's gonna be Martin Luther King, so we've moved it to that Wednesday. So, we will have a Wednesday meeting, we'll, we'll update social media, we'll do what we can, we'll make sure that we know further progress of any change, but due to the holiday, we've moved it forward, uh, two days to continue to keep that on the, the calendar and the schedule. So, we will have that meeting on the twenty second.
Twenty second.
Yeah, on, on Wednesday, the twenty second, at five thirty. Other than that, thank y'all all for being here, we appreciate it very much. Happy evening.